Good evening, welcome to Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting of November 13th, 2017. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here, President Burton.
Here. We have a quorum. Mr. Johnson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to a very exciting Board of Education meeting. This is one that we look forward to all year long when we get to celebrate our Teachers of the Year. We have a very full agenda this evening, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Our agendas, if you are loc- if you're in our room this evening and you'd like to have a copy of our agenda, they're located just on the table outside the door to your right. Also on that table are blue slips for audience participa- or audience communications if anyone chooses to participate in that this evening. If you're watching from home and you'd like an agenda, you can find one on our website. That can be found at www.livoniapublicschools.org, and if you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to the agendas and follow along with our agenda and our information packet that goes along with that for the evening. One of these significant goals that the district is working on this year is respect, and that is intended to go in every direction, from student to student, from adult to adult, and from adults to students. And this board would like it known that we take that very seriously. This board is- we are giving you our commitment that we will treat everybody in this room with respect, and we would like to encourage everybody who is participating this evening to do the same. We find no better way to teach our children than to model it ourselves. This meeting this evening is a regular meeting, or what some folks refer to as a voting meeting. What that means is that the items that are coming before the vote, before the Board this evening for a vote, have been discussed at typically at least two prior meetings. Our study session where we take a first glance at many items, and our Committee of the Whole where we take a very deep dive and have a lot of discussion. Therefore, you may or may not hear the level of discussion on items before we vote on them. Please understand it's not because we're taking anything lightly, but it's because we have basically beat these issues up to death in every way that we can think of before they get to tonight's meeting. So we may have some questions and answers, but if you're looking for a deeper discussion about the issues that are coming before the Board, I really encourage you to follow along with either attend or watch from TV at home, or watch on our website, our Committee of the Whole meetings. Those are the meetings where we go into great depth of discussion, so if you're looking for that, then that's the kind of meeting that you'd like to follow along with. But tonight, we will be voting on each item that comes before the Board. We also are going to be taking a break after Item 3C, after our district update from our Superintendent this evening, in order to spend a few minutes of time so that those who are in attendance this evening can congratulate personally our honorees of the evening, who are our Teachers of the Year. With that, we're going to go ahead and get started with the rest of our meeting. We are now on Item 3, Communications, and Teacher of the Year for 2017-2018, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Superintendent Oakley. As you can see from our large crowd this evening, on hand, this is a very special evening for Livonia Public Schools. Tonight, we're celebrating our Teachers of the Year for the 2017-2018 school year. You might say it's our version of the Oscars, or the Grammys, or the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame injunctions, personal favor of mine. Except our honorees aren't- they are not rock stars on a red carpet, or stars on a red carpet, or rock stars on a stage. They are rock stars in our classrooms, however. They are true stars in the eyes of all whom they serve as educators in our district. Before we place them in the LPS limelight, with all that glitz and glamour associated, I'd like to take a moment to review how they came to this point. To be selected as a Teacher of the Year in a district with nearly 1,000 teachers and more than 14,000 students is quite an honor. Our 13-member Teachers of the Year Committee review the nominations, which come from all around the district, including from parents, from staff, and from students. The nominees then submit their informational packets, and references are collected for each of the nominees. The selection process is often difficult because there are far more excellent teachers in our district than the few that we are honoring, than we recognize each year. But that list of former Teachers of the Year continues to grow each and every year. With that, at this time, I'd like to ask any former Teachers of the Year in our audience to please stand and be recognized. Thank you for joining us this evening. And now, onto our current honorees. I'll ask all three to join me at the podium, and with a drum roll, I will now introduce for the 2017-2018 school year, our Elementary Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Elizabeth Gustansky. Our Middle School Teacher of the Year is Mr. Phil Quackenbush. And our High School Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Julie Smith. Okay, so, I don't feel like I'm coming away from you, just for a few moments while I go over a couple things here. With this honor comes a certain amount of celebrity factor. As LPS Teachers of the Year, they will be recognized on the district's website and our social media channels, in the district's Dialogue Newsletter, by the Livonia Chamber of Commerce at its annual Leadership and Awards Ceremony, by the Livonia PTSA Council during its Founder's Day event, and tonight, they are being recognized by some of our local elected officials. We have special tributes from the State of Michigan and from Wayne County. I will grab the first one from the state. This is a special State of Michigan proclamation, signed by Governor Snyder, Senator Patrick Kolbeck, and State Representative Laura Cox, who has joined us this evening. And if I could ask Representative Cox to help me distribute these tributes. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you for having me. This is always a pleasure and an honor to kind of give you all all the accolades that you deserve on one time, but I think we're going to do it a couple times throughout the year because you get invited to some other events throughout the community, from the chamber, et cetera, that I'll see you again, but you won't get the big one that time. But I do want to say, I want to thank the Board for always inviting me and including me and to join in this celebration. It's nice to take a few moments to honor you all for all the hard work you do for our kids and our community, and it really does mean a lot to us. So, do you want me just to give it to each of them right now?
Sure.
All right, so Elizabeth.
Thank you very much. Here's a proclamation that talks a little bit about what you've done for the kids, and we really appreciate what you've done. Thank you. I'm standing, shaking my hand. Angela was going to try and get a picture. I'm right here.
Oh.
I want to- that's a middle school teacher.
Your question.
Thank you. I know you do stuff for the music, and I play the violin, so thank you for all you did for our little kids, so we always appreciate people encouraging music.
Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. Congratulations. Can we just take a quick picture? Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
And then we have a special resolution from Wayne County, signed by the three county commissioners who cover our district. County Commissioner Terry Morecki, County Commissioner Diane Webb, who is present with us this evening and will present the tributes, and County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. Commissioner Morecki extends her sympathies for not being able to join us this evening.
Of course, she would be here a minute if she could. Absolutely. And Glenn Anderson doesn't represent Livonia anymore, but he still loves you. So we still include him. Well, I want to say thank you all for allowing me to be a part of this. I don't know if I told you this last year, but I started out in education major. I went to Eastern, of course, the school for teachers, and then the phone company wouldn't pay for that degree, so I had to switch majors. Years later, I thought, well, you know, I'm going to go back into that. I'm going to try teaching. So if anybody thinks it's easy, they need to try it, because you'll get a whole new respect for educators. And middle school educators, a special place in heaven for them. So I want to say thank you very much, Elizabeth, for the great work you do with the little ones. And this is on behalf of the entire Wayne County Commission, but it's signed by the three that worked in your district. Thank you. And Mr. Quackenbush, I think I remember you around Emerson when my son was there. God bless you. He's almost 17 now and much better. And that would be on behalf of the County Commission. Thank you. And Julie over at Franklin, thank you so much, Julie, for everything you do with those high school kids, and I hope they know that you know more than them. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
I'm going to take a second to set those down, maybe, because I have more loot for you.
While they take a moment, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion. May I have a motion on this item, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt resolutions for the 2017-2018 Teachers of the Year. Elizabeth?
We'll get you in just a sec.
Elizabeth Gustansky from Kennedy Elementary, Phil Quackenbush from Emerson Middle School, and Julie Smith from Franklin High School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Johnson. I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Now it's my turn to shower them with gifts. First off, I'm not sure if you had the chance to notice, our plaque has been updated in the lobby upstairs to reflect each of our Teachers of the Year for this year. That perennial plaque goes back to 1982, I believe, so it's quite a tradition in our district. Next, we have some awesome and quite heavy golden apples that are engraved. I'll present to each of you. I'll just grab one out real quick. And also a Teacher of the Year pin.
Nice.
I'm just going to show everyone these apples. They're amazing.
Oh.
They're very heavy, too. Break a tooth or two, try to eat those. And finally, we've assembled, this is the fun part, I've assembled some pretty cool gift bags for you, filled with gift certificates from the following donors. One for you. So these bags are filled with certificates from Wayne County Commissioner Terry Morecki's office donated Tiger baseball tickets. So that's two tickets. And County Commissioner Diane Webb's office also donated two Tiger tickets. Their sections happen to be near each other, so you can coordinate with their offices. There are certificates in the bag that gives you some instructions, and you can do two in each section, and have a party of four if you wish. Let's see, we also have gift cards to Las Palapas Restaurant, which is very good. They donate every year. We love Las Palapas. Also, a gift card from Rusty Bucket, the Hagerty and Seven Mile location. Georgia Senate on Hagerty, you're in the mood for a good Coney Island. Livonia Parks and Recreation this year donated nine hole, I hope you're golfers, if not, you can give them away, I won't be offended, nine holes of golf for two at one of our city courses. The Livonia Symphony Orchestra has donated tickets to the remaining performances of this season, which is phenomenal. A gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble, every teacher's favorite store, I think, and some power cards to David Foster's. So we also held a reception earlier up in the Superintendent's office in the front lobby area, and we'd like to thank Big B Coffee on Seven Mile in Farmington for donating the coffee for our reception tonight. That was very nice as well. Okay, so at this time, I'll have Phil and Julie, you can take your seats, and I'm going to keep Elizabeth up here, if you want to set your stuff up. Now I'd like to tell you about our Teachers of the Year. So sit back and enjoy the wonderful stories about these very special teachers. We'll start off with Mrs. Elizabeth Gustansky, who is a second grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary. And at this time, I'd like to ask Board Trustee Liz Jarvis to join us at the podium, and we've prepared this special resolution from our school district to you as part of your tributes this evening, and Mrs. Jarvis will read the resolution.
Congratulations, Elizabeth. Great name. Thank you.
Whereas, the trustees of the Board of Education are desirous of recognizing and promoting excellence in education in this school district. And whereas Elizabeth Gustansky, a second grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary, and an eight-year employee of Livonia Public Schools, has distinguished herself by being named Elementary Teacher of the Year for 2017-2018 by a district-wide committee of teachers, parents, and administrators. And whereas, in achieving that recognition, it is evident that she is an exceptional educator, going far beyond the expected range of her duties to meet the needs of students, colleagues, parents, and others. And whereas Elizabeth believes all students can learn if they feel safe, comfortable, respected, and supported, tenets that she practices and models each day for her students through the use of creative lessons, classroom environment features, and personal relationships that she builds with her students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Elizabeth Gustansky for being named Elementary Teacher of the Year for 2017-2018, and for the dedication and loyal service that she has rendered to Livonia Public Schools, her students, and the community. Congratulations.
I'd just like to add as well that Elizabeth has a long history within Livonia Public Schools, being not only a graduate, but also starting to ensure our future enrollment.
Thank you, trustee Jarvis. Okay, now it's my turn to brag about you a little bit. Elizabeth Gustansky is a, as we just heard, is a product of Livonia Public Schools, and is a graduate of Central Michigan University, where she earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education and in cognitive impairments. She also earned a master's degree in learning disabilities from Madonna University. Her educational background contributes to the inclusive classroom environment she has created for her students of all abilities in her general education setting at Kennedy Elementary. A few brief examples show this. First, there is a place within the classroom called Alaska. Hmm, what could this mean? When a student becomes frustrated or upset, he or she can cool down in a little spot called Alaska, in a space in the room, on a little carpet square, I assume, and sit quietly until he or she can rejoin the group. Her classroom also has Braille labels that accompany signs and labels, so that any student with visual impairments may have the same ability to interact with the classroom as his or her peers. Mrs. Gustansky, who is versed in American Sign Language, teaches her students silent hand signals, so that if they need to use the restroom, get a drink of water, we know that those requests come often, they do not need to, they can do so silently without interrupting a lesson or disturbing quiet time. A third example is the alternative seating Mrs. Gustansky has in her classroom. It's not unusual to walk into her room and see students sitting on yoga mats, working at a countertop, bouncing on a yoga ball, or sitting on wiggle stools, all while engaged in their learning. Each of these examples tie into Elizabeth's teaching philosophy, that all students are capable of learning and of being members of the classroom community. Her classroom is a place where the expectation is the same for all students, that they will work hard and do their very best. In doing these things, Elizabeth has created an environment in which students feel safe and respected regardless of ability. They feel comfortable sharing about themselves and trying new things. This has not gone unnoticed by her second graders. In fact, one student, I think this was maybe last year or the year before, two years ago, proclaimed January 26th as being International Miss Turbiac Appreciation Day, Turbiac being her maiden name. This adorable proclamation thanked her for doing so much for the students and for making second grade rock. Elizabeth was nominated for Teacher of the Year by a former parent, Mrs. Clark, Kara Clark, who states that Mrs. Gustansky is a, quote, "one in a million" teacher. She stated that she communicates well with students and parents, seeks and is open to the latest technology for her students, and is someone who is willing to step out of her comfort zone to do what is best for her students. She was also nominated by Christine Finkel, who is a curriculum coordinator for the district. Christine writes that she first met Elizabeth as a third-grade student at Webster Elementary. As you know, Webster houses our Elementary Gifted and Talented Program, as well as a comprehensive special education program. The two student populations often have the opportunity to interact with one another. Christine recalls that Elizabeth, as a student, would enthusiastically participate in activities that fostered positive relationships between the two programs. Fast forward, Christine notes that Elizabeth continues to stretch and grow as an educator and as a mentor. Elizabeth is known for piloting programs and trying new things to improve instruction and learning. Her classroom door is always open to teachers who wish to observe a particular lesson. In fact, she has contributed on numerous occasions to the professional development of teachers both inside and outside of the district. Her involvement at Kennedy includes working with the Student Lighthouse Team and other Leader in Me activities, sharing her classroom with her colleagues, holding second-grade meetings with students and her colleagues, working on the achievement team, and more. Her principal, Dr. Danielle Daniels, said, quote, "She is a teacher who leads by example. From the lunchroom to the parking lot, to helping lead an assembly, Elizabeth is there." Dr. Daniels calls her creative, engaged, dependable, a true leader who is compassionate and intelligent. As her teaching partner, Ms. Jackie Banner had a lot to say, she really did, about her colleagues. She describes Elizabeth as being detail-driven, a multitasker extraordinaire, a confident leader, an excellent listener, a great communicator, a lifelong learner, a collaborator and supporter. That was just part of what she had to say. She also said Elizabeth has a sense of humor and a warm, welcoming demeanor. Jackie said, quote, "I am a better teacher, having learned so much from her." Dr. Daniels summed up her endorsement by saying, quote, "Elizabeth is highly motivated and engaged in making a difference in the field of education and in the lives of children." And with that, I'd like to offer a round of applause for Mrs. Smith. And I'm going to guess that she has a few words to say, so take it away.
Thank you. This is quite an honor. For most of my life, I've known that I've wanted to be a teacher, except for maybe a couple short years in elementary school, where if you'd asked anyone, they would tell you that I was going to be the first female president of the United States. But I've been very, very fortunate to have so many people in my life who have helped to reaffirm my dream of becoming a teacher and have helped shape me into the teacher that I am today, and I truly feel that they're just as deserving as being a part of this honor as much as I am. My first teachers, my parents, my dad, who taught me the value of doing hard work and doing a job that you truly love, having something to look forward to going to every day, and my mom, who was my first role model as a teacher, and she taught me that every child is capable of learning. And she taught me that every child is capable of learning and deserving of an education. My sisters, who let me spend countless hours in our basement classroom that I created, teaching them whatever lesson I had learned that day at school. My sisters probably learned fractions a lot sooner than they should have.[618.41][618.41][laughter] And they also gave me my very first taste in classroom management.[622.75][622.75][laughter] As it was said, I went to school at Webster, where I was very fortunate to be able to take part in not only the ACAT program, but to participate in a lot of activities with the MOCHI program as well. And I believe that's where I got my first really drive to want to be a teacher of students with special needs. And I had a lot of fantastic teachers at Webster, two of them who are here tonight, Mrs. Finkel and Mrs. Frelick. In fact, when I first became a teacher, my first year, I went back to Webster and I ran into Mrs. Frelick in the copy room. And she was congratulating me. And I said, "Oh, hi, Mrs. Frelick." And she goes, "Oh, no, you can call me Sue now or colleagues." And I go, "I can't do that![665.54][665.54][laughter] You're my teacher." But also, my fifth and sixth grade teacher, Terry Masick, who's not here tonight, who made learning and just her lessons so much fun and so engaging that I still remember so many of them today and just have so many memories of trying to make root beer in her classroom or creating the Marsville habitats that we did. In high school, I was a part of the Global Education Program. And there were so many teachers within that program who really touched me and showed me how I could maybe even apply what I'm learning in the classroom to service outside of the classroom. Especially Judy Burdsky, who with her global perspective on education as well as all the other teachers' perspective on education, I really tried to emulate that in my classroom, even with the little ones. My husband, who's very patient on the nights that I spend grading or I'm at school and who listens to me tell the stories and share the accomplishments of my students and who will get just as excited and celebrates with me as I celebrate their accomplishments. Very fortunate to work in a building at Kennedy with a bunch of fantastic educators who have just helped me to grow as a teacher so much. I work with two fantastic women, Jane Kitseros and Jackie Banner, who are my second grade team. And the collaboration among us has allowed me to really try new things. We bounce ideas off each other. And their excitement gets me excited. And they truly show me that education is always changing. I don't think we do anything ever the same way ever once. It always changes each and every year. And just all the other people there, the opportunities I've been provided has just been fantastic. And then finally, my students, my past students, my current students, and the students that I'll have in the future, they shape me as much as an educator as anyone else. I became a teacher because I wanted to be able to have an impact on people. And I feel I really get a chance to do that within the classroom. Just the same way that so many other teachers had that impact on me. And these students continue to drive me to become a lifelong learner and to share my love of learning with them as I find new ways to teach them and to engage them. I want to thank you for this honor. I'm very thrilled to be the Elementary Teacher of the Year.
Okay. Next, I'd like to introduce you to another highly skilled teacher in our district, Mr. Philip Quackenbush. If you could join me at the podium. Mr. Quackenbush, and I have to call him Mr. Quackenbush because my son is a current student.[849.37][849.37][laughter] So it kind of seems strange not to call him Mr. Quackenbush.[853.16][853.16][laughter] Okay, so I think it's been mentioned already, but Mr. Quackenbush teaches seventh and eighth grade band and orchestra at Emerson Middle School. At this time, I'd like to invite Trustee Crystal Frank to the podium to read the special resolution we have drafted.
Resolution. Whereas, the trustees of the Board of Education are desirous of recognizing and promoting excellence in education in this school district. And whereas Philip Quackenbush, a band and orchestra teacher at Emerson Middle School and a 15-year employee of Livonia Public Schools, has distinguished himself by being named Middle School Teacher of the Year for 2017-2018 by a district-wide committee of teachers, parents, and administrators. Whereas, in achieving this recognition, it is evident that he is an exceptional educator, going far beyond the expected range of duties to meet the needs of students, colleagues, parents, and others. Whereas Philip believes students benefit greatly academically, physically, and emotionally when exposed to music education, as he carries out this belief through consistent professional instruction and genuine care and concern for his students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Philip Quackenbush for being named Middle School Teacher of the Year for 2017-2018 and for the dedication and loyal service he has rendered to Livonia Public Schools, his students, and the community.
Thank you, Trustee Frank. Okay. I do have you in here as your first name, so I'll just go with that.[981.21][981.21][laughter] Okay, me too. Phil is a product of Livonia Public Schools and he went on to earn his bachelor's degree in music and a master's degree in liberal studies from Eastern Michigan University. He was nominated by student Gabriel Serta, who calls Mr. Quackenbush, quote, "humorous, thoughtful, empathetic, and polite."[1005.54][1005.54][laughter] I thought that was cute. When we say that Mr. Quackenbush teaches seventh and eighth grade band and orchestra, this means he is preparing approximately 170, 12- and 13-year-old students, preparing them for more than 10 performances in the school and in the community each school year. In addition, he has been known to teach students who have special needs and have shown an interest in music. It doesn't end there. Mr. Quackenbush offers after-school help sessions for students who need extra instruction or additional practice for the solo and ensemble competitions, known as festival, I believe. He often coordinates with a few of his former students who are now in high school, has them come and work with the students after school. Building this middle school-to-high school connection has proven to be a great thing for many who continue on with their instrument in high school. Phil is a member of the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association, and he has served on district committees to rewrite the LPS elementary and secondary music curricula. He also served on the Music Equipment Committee and the Building Renovation Committee. He's a member of the Emerson Staff Advisory Committee and has been an instructor for his colleagues during professional development sessions. He takes great pride in teaching music to students because he knows he is teaching the whole child. He knows he is helping his students be better readers, thinkers, and listeners who are doing math while analyzing musical patterns. They're learning words in foreign languages while reading terms of musical expression. They're making an individual effort while playing on a team. And they are aware of their physical states by practicing good posture and breathing techniques. In recent years, Mr. Quackenbush reflected upon his own experiences as a fifth-grade music student in Livonia Public Schools, a time when all students were loaned instruments free of charge by the district before their families, our families, would consider purchasing an instrument. While buying instruments back then was a lot more affordable than it is now, this is why he helped form a partnership with two wonderful community organizations, the Livonia Symphony Orchestra and Livonia Kids and Families. Together, they held instrument drives and paid to refurbish used instruments that can now be loaned to students in our music programs within the Franklin Triad. What a wonderful partnership and show of support. Members of the LSO also donated their time to conduct educational workshops in our schools. Ms. Rose Ketchnowski, President of the Livonia Symphony Orchestra, who is in the audience, I believe. I saw her earlier. Thank you for being with us.[1197.54][1197.54][laughter] On this side. Hello there. She had this to say about Mr. Quackenbush. Quote, "He is a total professional beyond all expectations. I found Mr. Quackenbush to be a delight to work with. He definitely has a very apparent love of music and he cares for his students." Music teacher and colleague Teresa Sirahal said Mr. Quackenbush is humble, kind, and always goes the extra mile to help his students succeed. His former students return to help his program grow and develop. And that says a lot about his character and the relationships with his students. Emerson Middle School Principal Ann Owen said those relationships, not only with students but with parents and staff, is reflected in the high level of enrollment in the Emerson Music Program. In fact, he may have a record-breaking seventh-grade orchestra this year. Is that right? Mrs. Owen notes that nearly 100% of seventh graders continue on with orchestra in eighth grade. She said, quote, "His ability to attract and retain string students is a point of pride for our building." And it has been noted that most students move on to play in the orchestra at Franklin. Mrs. Sirahal said her orchestra students were always well-prepared after coming from Emerson. She said, quote, "We always had 95% to 100% retention between middle and high school in the orchestra program. This is extremely high and it is because the students had such a wonderful experience in their middle school that they wanted to continue on. That is the largest compliment any music teacher could hope for." And with that, we'd love to hear from Mr. Quackenbush right after we give him a round of applause.[1310.71][1310.71][applause]
Anyone who's ever sat in my classroom before or been to one of my concerts knows that I tend to ramble. So I wrote things down to try and keep it a little bit short and sweet. First of all, I'd like to thank the Teacher of the Committee for selecting me for this distinction. I am truly honored to have been selected. I'd also like to thank my colleagues and my family, my wife, for the support that they show me every day. A lot of what I was going to talk about is things that you heard Stacy saying just a moment ago. But I really want to stress that so much of it is about not me working with the community, but the community reaching out to Emerson. So much of what we've been able to do at Emerson is because the community is so supportive. I didn't go to the LSO, the Livonia Symphony, and ask them for help. They asked for a meeting with us. And they asked us what they could do to support Emerson Music. Livonia Kids and Family, that was Chuck Dartis and his team reaching out to Emerson and asking, "What can we do for the music program?" And I am always very happy to accept that.[1393.71][1393.71][laughter] Don't misunderstand me. But the Livonia Symphony, they got the grant, which allowed them to refurbish all those instruments when they did that instrument drive. And it was members of the community who went into their closets and into their attics and into their garage spaces, heated garage spaces,[1411.83][1411.83][laughter] and pulled out all those instruments and donated them. And then it was the Livonia Symphony that sent them to different music repair vendors and got them fixed for us and then sent them to Emerson and to Cooper. It's Livonia Kids and Family that, beginning of the last few years, has emailed and asked, "What do you need? What can we provide for you to make sure that every kid has an instrument?" Because I came to Emerson after teaching at the elementary school. And I started Emerson in September of 2008. And you might remember, just a few months after September of 2008, there was a pretty big economic hardship that hit the entire country. And numbers in the music program just plummeted because families could no longer afford to rent instruments as freely as they could in the past. And while we saw some increase in that, it was never where it had been. Part of that's just due to natural enrollment decline. But the financial situation really hit our triad hard. And it's been the outreach of the Livonia Symphony, the outreach of Livonia Kids and Family, and honestly, community members just coming in. Every year, we get family members or parents of former students who come and say, "You know, my child's at college now. He just never plays the saxophone anymore. Take it. Please do what you can with it. Make sure a kid gets it and plays with it." It's been wonderful. And that's their outreach. The kids who come to tutor my students, the Franklin students who come, I seldom reach out to them. They just show up. Mondays after school, band kids show up. Wednesdays after school, orchestra kids show up. They want to tutor my students and help them and show them that there's a place for them at Franklin when they get there. I received an email today from one of my former trombone players who said, "Hey, if you have any trombone players who are playing, I'd like to be there next Monday. So let them know that I'll be there to tutor them if they want any help." And he followed up with the ominous, "If you don't respond, I'm showing up."[1544.45][1544.45][laughter] Just letting me know that, you know, he's going to be there. A great kid, though. He's welcome in any way. But that's the kids. That's not me. That's the kids. And of course, we've gotten so much help in the last few years from the community. When they passed the Fine Arts Bond, the Performing Arts Centers are wonderful. And the changes that were made to my room are just amazing. I still remember when Emerson was renovated. I had my eighth graders in there who had played in the seventh graders previously. And I had a flute player sitting in the first row. We had just finished warming up for the first time, first day back with our instruments. And a flute player turns to me and she says, "Mr. Quackenbush, I heard the trombones. I've never heard the trombones before. You always told us last year, listen to the bass line. Listen to the trombones." "We always said we did, but I never heard them."[1604.83][1604.83][laughter] You know, because kids tell you what you want to hear. But for the first time, they were in a room that had adequate musical dampening that they weren't just hearing the echoes of their own sound and their own section around them all the time. So, and that's, I can't stress enough how much that community support has done for us. And instruments. Most of the instruments that have been donated to us, most of them have been flutes, clarinets, violins, violas. But for the big instruments, the tubas, baritone horns, the cellos and the basses, we've had a couple of good basses donated to us. But for the most part, that's been coming from the community, from the bond. Now, I don't have kids shying away from playing the bass or playing the cello. It used to be I might get two or three kids playing the cello and no one who wanted to play the bass because they had to transport the instruments. And you can't carry a bass on a bus.[1667.71][1667.71][laughter] And carrying a cello, I mean, that takes up the entire seat next to you. And it was a hardship for them. And they're also very expensive instruments. You can't rent a tuba at all. Now we have those things. And that's because of the community. So in my younger orchestra now, I have three bass players and five cello players. And the year previous, I had three bass players and five cello players. And that's because of the instruments that we have gotten as a result of the bond. So I just, you know, everything you heard Stacy say about community outreach, that's not... I'm more of a liaison on that. It's everything that you do for Emerson, that the community does for Emerson, that the charities do for Emerson, that the kids do when they come back to Emerson, that is what has really done the most to support our program and to help us. But on all of their behalf, I'm still very happy to accept the recognition of Teacher of the Year.
Mrs. Smith is a French teacher at Franklin High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Trustee Karen Bradford to the podium, read the special resolution.
Whereas the trustees of the Board of Education are desirous of recognizing and promoting excellence in education in this school district, and whereas Julie Smith, a French teacher at Franklin High School and a 21-year employee of Livonia Public Schools, has distinguished herself by being named High School Teacher of the Year for 2017, 2018 by a district-wide committee of teachers, parents, and administrators. And whereas in achieving that recognition, it is evident that she is an exceptional educator going far beyond the expected range of her duties to meet the needs of students, colleagues, parents, and others. And whereas Julie believes in creating a fun, engaging, and caring environment in which her students feel comfortable, safe, connected to the lessons, and are excited about learning everything they can about the French language and culture. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education do hereby commend and congratulate Julie Smith for being named High School Teacher of the Year for 2017, 2018, and for the dedication and loyal service she has rendered to the Livonia Public Schools, her students, and the community. Congratulations.[662.44][662.44](APPLAUSE)
I thought you were going to read it in French.
I was thinking about it, but then I thought, I don't want to show her up.[671.12][671.12](LAUGHTER)
Thank you, Trustee Brad. Okay. Ready?
Ready.
Julie Smith graduated from the University of Michigan Dearborn with her bachelor's degree and earned her master's degree from Mary Grove College. Mrs. Smith has taught all levels of French during her 21 years at Franklin, sometimes even teaching two different levels in one class period, if you can imagine that. She is known for her professionalism, but also, but she has also been voted Most Spirited numerous times, Most Spirited Staff Member numerous times. She isn't afraid to show her school spirit, especially when it comes to Spirit Week around homecoming. We're certain that the students enjoyed the year, that she was a very good sport, I presume, even when a pie was headed straight for her face.[725.62][725.62](LAUGHTER) Yes, I have my ways. And this was during probably a homecoming, I believe. Yes, okay. Julie is a mentor teacher and has been a longtime chair of the World Language Department at Franklin. She serves on the Faculty Council. She is a presenter at the 8th grade incoming freshman night and serves often as a senior class guest chaperone at prom. She also volunteers each year at commencements, and she is one of those soothing voices you hear who read the graduates' names so eloquently throughout the commencement ceremonies from the podium. She is a co-chair of the Senior Honors Night, which is a very special night, evening, for our students and our families. She calls this "a labor of love and so rewarding." Outside of Franklin, Mrs. Smith has served on the team that restructured the World Language Department in the district just prior to World Language becoming a graduation requirement. She worked on a Common Assessment Committee for the district and was on the team that designed the district's approach to teacher evaluations. She also served on the Textbook Adoption Committee. Basically, if there is an LPS committee related to World Language, she serves on it. Reaching far, very far, outside of the classroom and the district, Mrs. Smith has organized and carried out nine trips, is that correct, nine, so far, nine trips to French-speaking areas over her past 21 years at Franklin. She does this extra credit so her students may apply what they've learned in the class to the real French-speaking world. She has taken groups to France and to Quebec, Canada. She noted that watching her students' faces light up when they understand the language in its native area or when they see the Eiffel Tower for the first time makes it all worthwhile. So let's get back to the classroom here in Livonia, Michigan, where Mrs. Smith carries out her teaching duties with enthusiasm, fairness, respect, and a genuine care and concern for her students' well-being. Because she has her French students for consecutive years, she has the opportunity to bond with them and create a family within the classroom. It's not uncommon to see current and former students hanging out in her classroom before and after school. She's been named the Most Influential Teacher six times during the Livonia PTSA Council Founder's Day event. Colleague Jen Barker, who has worked with Mrs. Smith for 11 years, notes that many students want to carry on with French all four years of high school, which goes well beyond the graduation requirement. Ms. Barker said that this is because Julie is consistently looking for ways to improve what she does in the classroom, engage students in new and innovative ways, and she holds true to the expectations she sets for both herself and for her students. Ms. Barker said, and I quote, "There isn't a week that goes by that she isn't fine-tuning what she does, engaging her students to the fullest and helping them to love French as much as she does." She noted that Mrs. Smith is often viewed by her students as their school mom, and that says a lot. Assistant Principal John DePonyo said Julie is able to connect with students of all educational and motivational levels. He said, "As soon as students walk into her room, they feel welcome and invited. She makes all students feel comfortable, and she also makes them feel like they can be successful." Ms. Barker notes that Julie is quite humble, saying, "She doesn't do what she does for others to notice. Everything she does is because she loves French. She loves teaching French, and she loves watching kids discover a love for her own personal passion, and she loves impacting students' lives." In closing, I truly love how Principal Mr. Willenborg summarizes Mrs. Smith and her impact on students and staff at Franklin High School. He said, and we all know, he's quite known for his fantastic quotes and fantastic speeches as well, so I just love this. I took it word for word. The French expression for "the very best of the best" is "creme de la crème." The English translation for "the best of the best" is "Ms. Julie Smith." He goes on to say, it gets better. "Ms. Smith is a consummate professional in her style and in her instructional skills. Her forte, of course, is the passion and enthusiasm she shares with her students, and she is a master of making learning an exciting adventure. She possesses zeal and inspires her students to live the French language. Her students absolutely adore her, and many have shared her name as their favorite and most influential teacher. She is our very own Notre Dame, the Palace of Versailles, and the Eiffel Tower, all rolled into one." And with that, I would welcome a round of applause for Mrs. Smith.[1052.06][1052.06](APPLAUSE) And with that, I'd like to invite you to say a few words.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that unbelievable introduction, and congratulations to Elizabeth and Phil as well. It is a privilege to be honored with both of you. There are so many people to thank for helping me to get where I am today. Certainly, my parents have provided nothing but constant love and support as they were the very first teachers in my life. I am so grateful for them. Thank you to so many wonderful colleagues and friends throughout the district, including retired LPS teacher and former Teacher of the Year Lynn Masucci for being my mentor and confidant for so many years at Franklin, and to Jen Barker for being my person. I know you know what that means, and I could say thank you a million times over, and that wouldn't begin to express my gratitude. Thank you to the person who nominated me for this honor. Although you don't know that I know it was you, this award is that much more special because you nominated me. And of course, a huge thank you to my daughters Kennedy and Avery and to my husband Ron. Having teenagers at home certainly provides a different perspective of how adolescents function, how they deal with the highs and lows of their lives, and even how they perceive school in general. I've learned so much from them, and I believe I am a more compassionate teacher because of them. They fill my heart with joy, which I bring along with me to work each day. And to my husband Ron, you've lived every single day of school right along with me, providing advice and loving support for 20 years. If only you ever helped grade papers or write lesson plans, I'd have you right here next to me, receiving the award, too. Just kidding, I would not be here right now if it weren't for you, and I am so thankful. I could go on and on, naming names one by one, all of the people from whom I've learned so much, but perhaps my biggest debt of gratitude should go to the thousands of students whom I've had the privilege of teaching. It's those kids, my little punkins, they're the reason why I'm so excited to go to work each day. They provide so much happiness, and I love that I get to play a part in their lives. When Franklin's Principal Dan Willenborg and Student Activities Director Jenna Sparza devised their sneaky plan of how to reveal to me that I was chosen for Teacher of the Year, they knew right what to do and who should be present on that day. I was shocked to see my husband there, that was a terrific surprise, but seeing an auditorium full of my students, that made the moment extra special. I think of that day often, and the entire event was perfect. Thank you for orchestrating such a marvelous surprise. I am so fortunate to be able to share my passion for the French language and culture with these kids and help them expand their view of the world, both with language and with comprehension that different cultures do things differently. They learn to accept differences rather than judge them, and I am hopeful that the students carry these values throughout their lifetimes. There is no experience more gratifying than watching my students when we travel abroad. Along with my friend, Churchill High School French teacher Angela Jenkins, I've taken students to Quebec and to France nine times with our next trip planned for this June. These trips are truly life-changing for the kids and for me. There is nothing more priceless than watching the students literally cry when they see the Eiffel Tower for the first time in person, or when they can't wait to tell me about how they successfully ordered their own meal, all in French. These experiences give the students so much confidence in themselves, which expands far beyond the walls of our classroom. And I am so appreciative to the parents of these students who instill their trust in me to take their precious kids on such adventures. While I absolutely love everything that there is to teach about French, there is little that compares to the personal relationships that develop with the kids. I love seeing all those empty desks in the morning slowly fill up with current and former students who just want to chat with me before school starts. I love that they trust me enough to share their trials and tribulations and to ask for motherly advice. Because I am fortunate enough to have my French students year after year, we develop such a bond that the kids often call their classmates and me their family. Unfortunately, a couple of my students recently lost their own mothers to illnesses, and I feel privileged that they come to me for help and support that they would have otherwise gotten from their own moms. I love that Classroom Number 403 is like a second home for so many. There is no other profession that I could even imagine myself doing. Is the job difficult? Yes. Are there some days that are extremely trying? Of course. But there is nothing more fulfilling and rewarding than teaching. I know that I was made for this job. It is my duty to teach these wonderful kids something that I so deeply adore, to show them love and respect, and to give them the positive reinforcement and guidance that they long for, and to be an example of how they, too, can grow up and have a career that they love. I take this job seriously, and I am ever grateful to the district for hiring me and for entrusting me to take care of these students. Thank you so much for this honor.[1348.73][1348.73](APPLAUSE)
Are there questions or comments from members of the board?
Wow.
Yes, wow. Yes. Congratulations on behalf of the board to all three of our Teachers of the Year this year. It is absolutely our honor to share this evening with you, and we thank the many members of our audience who came to share in the joy and the celebration of the accomplishments of these three individuals. Right now, the Board of Education has a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank.
Support. Yes.[1387.98][1387.98](LAUGHTER)
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations.[1401.98][1401.98](APPLAUSE) The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, American Education Week. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District designate November 13 through 17, 2017, as the 96th Annual Observance of American Education Week.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, President Burton. Each year, our district, like those across the U.S., recognizes American Education Week, which is designated this year for the week, this week, November 13 through 17. This is the 96th Annual Observance of American Education Week. And what an appropriate time to publicly recognize all of our teachers, as we have honored just a few of our brightest and best here tonight. There is quite a bit of history behind American Education Week, so I'll briefly share a little bit about how it originated. It's kind of interesting. Back in 1919, the National Education Association was distressed that 25% of the nation's World War I draftees were illiterate and 9% were physically unfit. The NEA teamed up with the American Legion to seek ways to generate support for education. In 1921, the NEA Assembly in Des Moines, Iowa, during this assembly, a designation was created to recognize one week each year to spotlight education, calling for an Educational Week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. Before too long, the observance was cosponsored by the U.S. Office of Education, the National PTA, the American Legion Auxiliary, and a whole host of other organizations. The tradition continues today, and the resolution before you describes in detail the rationale for commemorating American Education Week each year in our country, our state, and in Livonia Public Schools. I invite the Board to read the resolution before you and to vote formally to place it on the record. And as we do so, we encourage our entire community to take a moment to thank our local educators for the very important work that they do for our future.
Thank you. Mr. Centers, would you read the resolution for us?
Absolutely. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas public education employees work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools unite entire communities, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common purpose. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District do hereby proclaim November 13 through 17, 2017, as the 96th Annual Observance of American Education Week, and urge all citizens to make a commitment to public education and to the future of our children. Be it further resolved that the trustees of Livonia Public Schools Board of Education take this special occasion to thank Livonia Public Schools employees, parents, and community volunteers for the work they do to educate and support the children of our school district.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions by our superintendent or members of our board? Mrs. Okus?
Thank you, President Burton. Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, for bringing that forward to us, and Secretary Centers for reading it. In honor of American Education Week, we proudly proclaim that there is no greater benefit to society and no greater commitment to the common good than growing and developing a well-educated populace, which is what our educators, our volunteers, and our school community does on a daily basis. So tonight, we proudly shine a beacon of light, of pride, for our public education, and especially for each and every member of our school community who gives tirelessly to our students and to our school community. So to all of our LPS staff, our Board of Education, and our volunteers, we owe you a debt of gratitude, and we honor you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from any other members of the board? Mr. Centers?
We spend so much time reflecting on the accomplishments of our students, and every meeting, we get to see some great things that students do. But we know that they wouldn't be there if it wasn't for the bus drivers that picked them up, the teachers that taught them, the paraprofessionals that helped out, the people in our schools that fed them and cleaned the buildings, so on and so on. These are really special people who work really, really hard and often don't get the thanks they deserve. So it's a very special week for us to be able to say thank you.
Thank you. Comments from- [INAUDIBLE] Comments from any other members of the board? Mr. Centers?
We spend so much time reflecting on the accomplishments of our students, and every meeting, we get to see some great things that students do. But we know that they wouldn't be there if it wasn't for the bus drivers that picked them up, the teachers that taught them, the paraprofessionals that helped out, the people in our schools that fed them and cleaned the buildings, so on and so on. These are really special people who work really, really hard and often don't get the
Thank you. Comments from any other members of the board? Amen to what Mr. Centers said. You have the gratitude of the entire Board of Education, and the folks in this room are obviously, we're preaching to the choir, really, right here, because we're speaking to a room of educators and those folks who love and support educators. Thank you for your contributions to our community. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 3C, district update from the superintendent. And after this update, we will be taking a five-to-ten-minute break so that we can congratulate our honorees of the evening. Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you, President Burton. What a great night it is this evening. We're so happy to have all of you here. We have a few updates, and then we'll look forward to personally congratulating each of our honorees and their proud families and friends. Last week, our LPS Education Foundation hosted its annual luncheon. The luncheon proceeds benefit the Competitive Edge College Savings Program, which is provided and offered to each of our incoming kindergarten students each year. This year, we had our largest event with over two-hundred-and-eighty tickets sold, and so we are so grateful to our foundation and to everyone who supported their efforts. It was a pleasure to welcome Ron Fournier, who is the publisher of Crane's Detroit Business, as our guest speaker. And very soon, the foundation will be surprising our newest grant recipients. I know Mrs. Jenkins will be joining members of the foundation and myself, à la the large checks from Publishers Clearinghouse, albeit maybe not in the same sum, but we will soon be visiting many schools and awarding the newest round of grant recipients. And to date, the foundation has, with this newest set of grants, will have awarded over one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars in grants to our staff across the district. That is tremendous, and the foundation luncheon is just one way, in addition to the contributions of our LPS staff and the generous supporters in our community that were able to do that. Our PACs, I know Mr. Quackenbush had a moment to recognize our Performing Arts Centers at our high schools. As you know, Stevenson and Franklin, PACs are both completed, and we have had the opportunity to have the sounds of beautiful music from triad concerts, school concerts, and collage concerts just fill those auditoriums. And the new band shells have been installed, and it really just enhances the talents of our vocal and instrumental performers. And we invite our community to join us for a couple of special upcoming performances. In addition to our concerts and other performances, we have Kappa presenting its first show of the school year. Katz will be performed. Churchill will be temporarily in the Franklin Performing Arts Center while theirs is under construction. So that will be performed December seventh, eighth, and ninth, 7:00 p.m. each evening, if you'd like to check out Kappa's new performance. And also Stevenson will present its three-act play on the same dates, the seventh, eighth, and ninth. Good thing there are three nights, you can make them both, at 7:00 p.m. in the Stevenson PAC. So we welcome you to join us to those. We know our students and staff spend endless hours and weeks preparing for those special performances. We want to congratulate our very own Franklin Patriots, who are the regional champs in football. They won an exciting and down-to-the-wire and cold game on Friday night against Flushing. It was an awesome victory, and they now move on to the state semifinal game, which is a very significant accomplishment. If you are interested in attending, it will be held in Grand Ledge this Saturday at 1:00 p.m., and they will be facing Grand Rapids Forest Hills Central. So we welcome you to join us. But most importantly, we'd like to congratulate all of our athletes, staff, and coaches. This weekend, our volunteer organization in the community, Blessings in a Backpack, you may have heard of that wonderful organization, who provide weekend food support to over two-hundred-and-forty students every week. They will be holding their annual fundraiser this Saturday. They have a bowling fundraiser every year. It's at Mary Bowl from 2:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, November eighteenth. If you'd like to attend, it's a $20 donation, and they would love to have you there. They also have a wonderful silent auction. Finally, we'd like to congratulate two of our own colleagues at this table. We had two board members who recently completed their board member certification in record time. Our two newest board trustees, Mrs. Frank and Mrs. Bradford, along with actually every single member of our Board of Education, attended the Fall Conference of the Michigan Association of School Boards. They were one of only six school boards across the entire state of Michigan who were all in attendance, continuing their own professional development this past weekend. And so Mrs. Bradford and Mrs. Frank have now become certified board members. We will soon be formally celebrating that, which will allow this board to become an honor board, as every single board member has taken time to become fully certified throughout their extended professional development. So we congratulate you. Thank you. Again, I just want to take a moment to congratulate our Teacher of the Year recipients, all such outstanding educators. We look forward to celebrating you throughout the year. And again, to all of our staff and volunteers in honor of American Education Week. I can't think of a more perfect evening to celebrate that than this evening. Thank you, President Burton.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we will now be taking about a five-to-ten-minute recess. Welcome to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting of November thirteenth, 2017. If you're following along with your agenda, we are now on Item 3D, written communications. Does any member of the board have written communications that they would like to share? Seeing none, we will go on to Item 3E, audience communications. I do not have any blue slips. Are there any members? Oh, there. We do have one member of the audience who would like to participate in audience communications this evening. Just as, by way of information, audience communication is designed to be a time that the board is listening to members of the community on whatever topic on which they would like to address us. It is a time that the board is going to be listening, as opposed to a question-and-answer session. We do have a three-minute time limit on each speaker, and the reason that we have a time limit is so that we can be fair limit is so that we can be fair to everybody who comes before the Board to speak and still take care of a lot of our business of the evening. Mr. Johnson has been our longstanding timekeeper, so if you do hear a little beep, we have just found that to be a little bit more polite way to let you know that it's time to wrap up some comments. Also, as you're approaching the podium, if you would state your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated. As I said, we do have one individual who would like to speak this evening, and that is Rachel Zuckermin. Rachel, good evening.
Good evening. It really emptied out.
It tends to do that, unfortunately.
That's okay.
But there are people who care a lot who are still here.
I trust that. So it's Rachel Zuckermin, and my address is 19721 Gary Lane, Livonia, Michigan, 48152.
Welcome.
I promise I'm staying really close to three minutes. It might be like three minutes and three seconds. Okay, so, good evening. Tonight, I want to speak to you all about an issue that I'm not sure is receiving enough attention in our Livonia community, and that is the opioid epidemic. I know we're all vaguely familiar with the fact that this is a national problem. On October 30, President Trump declared the national opioid crisis a public health emergency. However, tonight, I want to bring attention to the fact that this issue is closer to home, and in fact, it's in our own backyards. Even as the daughter of a Livonia substance abuse counselor, I was unaware of how local this problem had become until I attended the Community Town Hall Meeting on heroin and opioids in Wayne County hosted at Schoolcraft College on October 4. So to contextualize the issue, I want to share a few key statistics. First, five Michigan residents die every day from opioid epidemics, according to the Michigan Attorney General, which was more than the number of people who died from traffic crashes or gun fatalities in 2015. Michigan was one of 19 states identified by the CDC as having a statistically significant increase in opioid-related deaths. Furthermore, in Wayne County, there were 817 opioid-related deaths in 2016, an increase of 61% over the previous year. And to bring it closest to home, there were 72 overdoses with police response in Livonia last year, according to the Livonia Police Officer who spoke at the town hall. At the event, one of the professionals reiterated that conversations with our young people need to start early in middle school, if not sooner. If you wait until high school, you're already too late. Addressing this crisis will require a holistic response that involves legal, medical, and educational interventions. Educating our young people must be part of the equation. I want to encourage LPS to consider adopting an educational program called Operation Prevention, created in partnership with the Drug Enforcement Agency and Discovery Education to teach K through 12 students about the dangers of opioids. It's a no-cost program. It's credible, follows best practices, and adheres to educational guidelines. The program features elementary, middle, and high school classroom-ready lessons and companion guides for educators. It has a virtual field trip where students visit a community that has seen the effects of opioids, self-paced online modules, and parent resources. Two weeks ago, I met with Livonia Save Our Youth, an organization I was involved with as the president of Stevenson Students Against Destructive Decisions, and they are excited about the potential of this idea and are eager to offer their support. I certainly recognize there will be challenges with implementation. I know that curriculums are already jam-packed, and we will need to partner with teachers to assess the viability of integrating something like this into the classroom, but I'll conclude by reminding us that we are in a unique moment that deserves a unique response, and I hope my comments tonight will start a needed dialogue about how we pursue potentially lifesaving solutions for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
If it's okay, I just have flyers about the program.
If you could give them to Mrs. Wozniak, she'll make certain that the whole Board gets them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Oakwood, could you check into that on behalf of the Board?
I certainly will.
Thank you. I do not see anybody else who wishes to participate in Audience Communications. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we will go on to the next item on our agenda, Item 3F, Response to Prior Audience Communications. At our last general meeting of the Board of Education, there were a couple of individuals who came forward with specific questions about transportation for some of their students, and those were, each one of those folks has been reached out to on a personal basis and responded to. The next item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the Superintendent. 5A, meetings of the regular meeting, pardon me, minutes of the regular meeting of October 16, 2017. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of November 6, 2017.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by several. I believe Mrs. Bonnefield was the first one that I heard. Are there any questions or comments on the items of this Consent Agenda?
No.
Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Business Matters, and Item 6A is the approval of Foresight Design for Churchill High School Athletic Field. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Livonia Public Schools School District Board of Education approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to award the contract for design work of Churchill High School Athletic Field Replacement to Foresight Design, Berkeley, Michigan, for a total cost of $54,000, and authorize the Superintendent or her designate to negotiate and execute final contract.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. There were several. Let me see here. Mr. Francis, would you like to address this item for the Board?
Yes. Good evening, President Burton. I want to give first a brief overview of the district's plans with regard to athletic fields, because while this evening's motion is specifically to engage Foresight Design in designing the Churchill High School athletic fields and track, et cetera, resurfacing and upgrading, or updating, I should say, I want to give a brief overview, simply because word is kind of out that we're doing this, and I want to make sure that we're explaining to the general public that we're not intending to only do Churchill High School, but rather, we do have a two-year, or I should say, a two-summer plan with regard to all three high schools. So if you'd indulge me for a moment, I want to give a brief overview. First of all, with regard to Foresight, I do want to state that we intend to create a contract with the Board's approval this evening of this motion, to do a one-year contract with Foresight for design work with a one-year option on our part to extend the same fee to do the Franklin and Stevenson design into the summer of 19. Having said that, we do want to do the scope, generally speaking, with regard to the three high schools, of the football-soccer field resurfacing. As we know, we currently do have an athletic field, i.e., turf field, at the three high schools, and it is time to have that resurfaced. While we had last school year a GMAX test, as they call it, with regard to the surface viability, the safety of the field, and it does fall in the range that is acceptable GMAX rating, it is time to have them replaced. We have two summers to do them in, and in that time, that is an acceptable amount of time to ensure that we get a new field on there for the safety of the athletes and the players on there. Along with the football field, it is our intention to include in the scope a resurfacing of the track around the football-soccer field, as well as addressing the softball and baseball fields. Currently, our baseball fields of the high schools are also field turf, and softball fields are grass, and we were looking to, within the design, ask Foresight to include the infield for the baseball, as well as upgrades, or I should say, updates, to the softball field, but not being field turf. And that's mostly because softball doesn't actually like to use turf in the field of play. It sort of changes the game a little bit, so they stick to natural grass. There may be some other incidentals in there. What I mean by incidentals in the scope, there could be asphalt work, fence work, railings, et cetera, but all of that will fall into the design work by Foresight that we're asking for this evening, and be based upon the budget that the district has, and will be using the sinking fund for this project. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, if the Board may have them.
Are there questions or comments from the Superintendent or members of the Board? Mrs. Oakwood?
Thank you, Mr. Francis. I think that background is helpful for us, and just to mention, we are just in the beginning stages of the process. So as that conversation starts, we want folks to know that our Cabinet Team members who are involved in this, as well as myself, we will be not only working with Foresight and Plant Moran Cressa, but certainly with our athletic directors, our administrators, our coaches, et cetera, to garner feedback on the design and the necessary upgrades. And those conversations, we will be presenting to the Board in study sessions and in committee meetings, and so folks who are interested can certainly follow along. But we'll begin with Churchill next summer, and then Stevenson and Franklin the summer after. We are excited about these updates, but again, we are just in the very early stages of the planning process.
Any other comments or questions from members of the Board?
One question that I have been asked by a few members of our community is why we are doing turf as opposed to natural grass, and we discussed this in the Committee of the Whole, but for those who may not have been tuning in then, it's both a safety issue with our athletes, as well as allowing that field to be used time after time after time without being torn up. If it was a natural grass field, we would be far more limited with the number of teams, the number of students that we can get on that field. Right now, we can have one team after the other go right out on it and basically serve our students better and in a safer manner.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 6B, Approval of Bid Results for Secondary Science Equipment 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of secondary science equipment for a total cost of $218,086.86 from the following vendors in the amounts specified. Fisher Scientific, $20,201.88. Harco Scientific, $12,960. Hasco Scientific, $5,370.48. School Specialty, Frey Scientific, $165,828.60. And VWR, Ward's Science, $13,725.90.
Support. We have many. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Let me see here. Mr. Francis, would you please address this item for the Board?
Sure, thank you. This is the second of two rounds of secondary science equipment purchases. Just to back up, when we did the first one last spring, we put out to bid all the items. These are, the items that we're getting in this round were not, did not receive good bid coverage in the first go-around, or alternate bids of items that we did not ask for were bid on by companies. We purchased the majority of the science equipment that came from the Committee of Middle and High School Science Teachers that was created. The recommendations of prioritized science equipment was put out last spring. Again, the items that we did not get good bid coverage on, we've brought back for this recommendation of science materials and equipment. I shouldn't say materials, but equipment. So this is a recommended purchase out of the bond, 2013 bond, for the recommended required items for both middle and high school sciences.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments by members of the Board or the Superintendent? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I would like to thank Mr. Francis for including the additional information that we requested in our packet this week. It was extremely helpful. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And I thank Mr. Ben Hillard, the science coordinator for the district, who really did the legwork on pulling that information together. I just got to tag my name to the memo, so, thank you, Mr. Hillard.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Centers?
For those of people who are watching but may not know exactly what this equipment is, this is long-term-use equipment, microscopes, IC weights and scales, and things that can be used for a long time that will help our science students for many years.
Correct, and that's also why, as Mr. Hillard pointed out, we went with perhaps, in some cases, a more expensive item, but because it was a better-built and longer-lasting item versus a less-expensive item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments from other Board members or questions?
It has been stated, but just like to reiterate for the public that this equipment is coming out of the bond money, and if you tuned in earlier, you heard a very heartfelt thank you from Mr. Quackenbush, one of our Teachers of the Year, thanking our community for the support of the bond and what it means in the individual classroom. In his classrooms, it was with musical instruments, and here, our science teachers are benefiting from the same, the same kind of support and equipment that's been much-needed in their classrooms. So thank you to our community for this item, or these items. Any other comments or questions?
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 6C, Approval of Purchase Secondary Furniture 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of two-person desks, stand-up desks, and student chairs with arms from Staples Business Advantage in Livonia, Michigan, for a cost of $2,571.60, and four-leg student chairs from Interior Environments in Novi, Michigan, for a cost of $103,444.64, for a total cost of $306,016.24.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. This is a planned purchase from the 2013 bond. As we've done, as the bond has supported in the past, we've made several rounds of furniture purchases for elementary as well as secondary schools. This is another purchase for secondary furniture. We have two-person tables, which is an item that we've planned to purchase. Previously, we did order and purchase with the Board's approval, the single desks, and also stand-up desks, actually, for elementary. So in this instance, we have our two-person desks that will be replacing desks in the three high schools and the three middle schools, as well as the Garfield Community School, the Western Wayne Skill Center Program that will be moving into there. We have more student chairs. These are the same chairs that we've purchased in the past, just each building has their own colors. And then, the chairs with arms are actually a more unique item for the Western Wayne Skill Center Program at Garfield Community School for students that may need a little more support with regard to sitting and standing back up again. So we did have some of those, and we're actually getting some stand-up desks into the Skill Center Program as well. So that covers the items in this purchase, and we recommend the Board approve for the, again, out of the bond, for the secondary furniture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the Superintendent or the Board? As you can see, if you're watching from right now, these are a string of items that we've had a great, great deal of discussion on in previous meetings, so we may be clipping through a few of these on a quicker basis. We have a motion right now by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 6D, Approval of Bid Results for Interior Doors 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of eight interior doors from Ray Haven Group Livonia, Michigan, for a cost of $23,225.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. These are interior doors, as we've discussed in the past, mostly at Frost Middle School. They have six that are going there, and we have one at Cooper and one at Roosevelt. These are all being supported through the 2013 These are all being supported through the 2013 bond, and actually items that we just did not replace at the time during that first phase specifically at Frost. We're talking about a couple of gym doors. We're talking about the interior doors for the cafeteria, which are still the original doors. So we decided to go back in and replace them as we did in other buildings as we were renovating.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there comments or questions from the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 6E, Approval of Bid Results for Clay Demolition. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation of the district's Director of Operations, Philip Francis, to award the contract for the demolition of Clay School to Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating Incorporated, Dundee, Michigan, for a total cost of $440,000, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. As the district board knows, and as sure much of the community knows, the board has entered into an agreement to purchase this property at Clay. Pardon?
To sell.
Oh, to sell. Did I say purchase?
Yes.
It's a habit, sorry. Agreement to purchase, to sell this property at Clay. And under the terms of the agreement, the district is responsible for the demolition of the structure that is currently there, as well as peeling up the asphalt parking lot that is currently located there. We actually had very good bid coverage with 13 companies that had put in for bids. Some did not completely fill out the paperwork and were disqualified. And we were recommending Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating at $440,000. Just to clarify, while it was not the lowest dollar amount bid, it is the lowest responsible bid, we did do due diligence by interviewing the firms as well as doing reference checks. And NTH is our engineering consulting firm. They assisted between the interviews, the reference checks, and history that either LPS itself has had or NTH has had, working with other districts. And we did land on the responsible bidder of Sal and Bean Trucking.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments by the superintendent or the board? Mrs. Oakwist?
Thank you, President Burton. I just wanted to mention, just tangentially to this item, as you know, in September, the board voted to enter into purchase agreements with Infinity Homes to purchase not only the Clay property, but additional properties. And so I thought I would just mention a quick update to our community. As part of that process, we hold community meetings for neighbors within that, surrounding those properties that we have, on which we have entered a purchase agreement. We held community meetings at the end of October and the beginning of November. At those meetings, which were very, very well attended, we were pleased to welcome many members of the community. And a number of the questions that we received from the community were regarding the next steps in the process. So the site plans, the development of the land, et cetera, which really fall under the purview of the city of Livonia or the city of Westland, depending on where that parcel of land is located. So in order to assist the community, we encourage them to not only follow the city of Livonia and city of Westland websites and notices placed in the Observer, Mrs. Jenkins has also added a special item under the community tab. It is the first item under the community tab where we will continue to update information with regard to meetings or information related to the planning commission for the cities and when they begin to go through, when the developer will begin to go through the site plan approval process. So if any member of the community is interested in looking for more information, we have provided an update under that tab, and we will continue to update it, although we do encourage our community members to also be checking the city of Livonia and the city of Westland as they are really moving on through the next steps in the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. Mr. Francis, for the benefit of the community and to sort of dovetail on Mrs. Oakwist in the terms of a timeframe, when would we expect the demolition to begin? And do you have any idea how long it will take to complete?
Well, we would expect it to begin probably in, into December, maybe at the turn of the new year, but we're hopeful in December. And it takes several months. The abatement process is going to take some time. We do ensure that the building is raised safely, meaning environmentally, but as well as securing the construction area. So it's not a speedy process, but it is a process that has safeguards in it. So again, based upon the amount and how long it takes to abate the building, that will occur, and then the actual process of demolition will occur. We could probably safely assume, and not taking even Frost laws into consideration, but just working through, we could safely assume a four-month potential period there. And if they're delayed through any Frost law issues, then that would maybe slow it down a little bit as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Centers, do you have a question?
Mark and I were on the same wavelength there.
Okay. All righty. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
I heard a rumor that there may be a time capsule at Clay. So in the course of the deconstruction of the building, you know, this would be really exciting. So we'll keep our eyes open.
Okay. If you have any other further information about where that might be or who might have knowledge, if you could pass that on to...
And if our community has any helpful hints, that would be great, too.
That's fabulous. Any other comments or questions? All righty. I've got one question. Mr. Francis, am I remembering correctly that they're going to be, at Infinity's request, they're only going to be removing part of that parking lot in order for the remainder of the parking lot to be able to be utilized by the construction equipment that they're going to be needing?
The top, the top layer, the asphalt will come up. The base will remain, and they'll probably use that for their heavy equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just in case there's any question by the community. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Personnel Matters, and 7A is Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2017-2018 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Here is Mr. Archibald or Mr. McDonald? Mr. McDonald?
Yep. Thank you, President Burton.
You're very welcome.
The individuals that we are presenting to the board this evening are qualified to fill the positions, and they have been fully vetted. Through our extensive interview process that we conducted, we are very confident that these teachers will perform at a high level and in a manner that is consistent with our shared vision and collective commitments. The positions have each been included in the 1718 budget and are in an area of need. And we are pleased to be recommending such a talented group of individuals and are excited to get them in front of our students.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the superintendent or the board?
Welcome aboard.
Yes. Welcome to Livonia Public Schools. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7B, Leave of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Diane Gallup, 2017-2018 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you. You have before you the name of one employee who is requesting a leave for the remainder of the 1718 school year, and this request is in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, and I ask that you consider this request.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by the superintendent or the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 7C, Resignation. That is an item for information purposes only. It's not an item on which the board needs to vote. The next item on our agenda is Item 7D, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Deborah Corbille, Craig Schmidt, and Dorothy Wiedewilt.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we're very pleased to bring before you three employees who will be retiring. As these employees leave the Livonia Public Schools, they take with them a combined total of 57.1 years of experience. On behalf of the administration, I would like to thank these employees for their dedicated years of service that they have provided the students of the Livonia Public Schools, and I ask the board adopts the attached resolution of appreciation for them.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by the superintendent or the board?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yes, a round of congratulations and thanks.
Thank you.
Occasionally, as individual board members, we come upon a person on the retiring list who we know personally. And on behalf of my family, we would like to wish an especially happy retirement to Craig Schmidt. Craig has been our building supervisor since my first child was in elementary school all the way through. So a very special person to our family, and we wish all three of our retirees very well. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Item 8, Hearing from Board Members, and 8A is Resolution Supporting the Work of the School Finance Research Collaborative. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution supporting the work of the School Finance Research Collaborative and requesting that no changes to current school funding be made until the work of the School Finance Collaborative is complete.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Oakwist, would you like to address this? And after your comments, I would like, Mrs. Frank, if you could read the resolution. Thank you.
I would be pleased to. As you know, one of the items, just certainly of utmost importance to our school board and certainly our administration as we make recommendations to you, is regarding school funding. Currently, there is legislation pending in Lansing regarding a school funding issue that would impact our school district and any school district that has passed or would pass in the future, a millage for their ISD, their intermediate school district. We refer to that here as our Wayne County Enhancement Millage. We have shared information at prior meetings on this legislation. But importantly, one of the things that we've encouraged is that the legislature pause at this point to allow the School Funding Collaborative to complete the very important work in which they're involved, so that we have a clear and thorough picture of what adequate funding is needed to educate the children in the state of Michigan. As you will hear, as trustee Frank reads the resolution, certainly there is great work to be done in the state of Michigan with regard to educating our students, and we are fully committed to that work each and every day. We also ask that the legislature partner with us in that commitment and that we hold on any changes to legislation related to school funding until this funding collaborative has been allowed to complete their work. I'd like to just share a little bit of information about the collaborative. The School Finance Research Collaborative is a diverse group of business leaders and education experts from Metro Detroit to the UP who agree it's time to change the way Michigan's schools are funded. The collaborative is bringing together top industry experts to reexamine our approach to school funding so that we can fully prepare all students for jobs and success. The collaborative has hired contractors to provide the most comprehensive and accurate analysis of school financing in Michigan to date, with the results expected to be released by early 2018. This report will build on the findings of the state-funded Michigan Education Finance Study. We have referred to it here as the Adequacy Study, which was released in June of 2016. So before any substantive changes are made to any aspect of school funding in Michigan, we are asking our legislators to wait and review the findings of this extensive and in-depth study. We have been pleased to have Dr. Jennifer Terriell and Mr. Russ Keberly both participate as members of our school community and give input to the School Finance Research Collaborative as have many, many educators, administrators, parents, business leaders, community members, and university leaders as well, to provide input to this comprehensive study. And I know you'll receive even more information as Mrs. Frank reads the resolution. We would support the board passing this resolution. We will then share this with the governor and our legislators in both the House and the Senate, and again, encourage them to hold on any legislation related to changes to school funding until the collaborative has completed their work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Frank? This is a little bit lengthy, but it is so important that we do want the public to be fully aware.
Whereas, the Michigan Constitution states that the legislature shall maintain and support a system of free public elementary and secondary schools as defined by law, and whereas Michigan ranks 32nd in student achievement nationwide according to recent research, and whereas the governor's 21st Century Education Commission states that the urgency could not be greater regarding the failing K-12 performance, further stating that the Michigan students underperform their peers, ranking 41st on fourth grade reading performance nationally. And whereas, the commission further states that Michigan needs to efficiently distribute resources to public schools, and efficient distribution requires a transparent calculation of what it costs to meet performance standards, that students with greater educational needs should be provided with additional resources where needed to have an equal chance of meeting the performance standards. And whereas, in 2016, the state of Michigan conducted a comprehensive statewide cost study, adequacy study, that produced and provided valuable information but used only one methodology and did not fully examine special educational cost due to data availability issues, did not examine preschool, charter school, career and technical education, the impact of high concentrations of special needs students, and the cost challenges faced by geographically isolated schools and/or very small school districts. And whereas, the way we fund Michigan's public schools is fundamentally broken, and that Michigan needs to develop funding formulas that efficiently and effectively distribute these resources to the proper entities to support student success. And whereas, we must reexamine our approach, so all students, regardless of their circumstances, can achieve and succeed. And whereas, the School Finance Research Collaborative is a broad-based, diverse, and bipartisan group of business leaders and education experts from Metro Detroit to the UP, working together to determine the cost of student achievement for all PK twelve through twelve, and make recommendations to change how our schools are funded. And whereas, the School Finance Research Collaborative is supporting Michigan's first comprehensive school adequacy study using multiple methodologies to determine the cost of educating a student. And whereas, the School Finance Research Collaborative has hired the nation's top two school finance research firms to examine cost issues associated with key factors, including preschool, poverty, special education, career and technical education, English language learners, at-risk learners, and schools that are geographically isolated. And whereas, adequacy studies have been performed in more than thirty other states over the past fifteen years, with over ninety percent of these studies using multiple methodologies as step one in considering any comprehensive school reform. And whereas, the School Finance Research Collaborative adequacy study is expected to be completed in early 2018, and will provide lawmakers and the public with the best, most accurate, and most reliable information on what it truly costs to educate all Michigan students. And whereas, any changes to the current legislation related to school funding should take into consideration these recommendations. Therefore, be it resolved, the Livonia Public Schools School District supports the School Finance Research Collaborative and its efforts to determine the true cost of educating all Michigan public school students, PK through twelve.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the superintendent or the board?
President Burton?
Yes, Mrs. Frank?
When I was at Michigan Association of School Boards this weekend, I attended a class on the Twenty-First Century, the Governor's Twenty-First Century Education Commission, and it was so insightful about the issues that are facing Michigan in funding, just like Mrs. Oakwood said, what we have going on, we really need to refocus how we are funding public schools, and it was so informative, and this is such a timely resolution. So thank you, Mrs. Oakwood, for leading the way and providing this for us as a school board to support.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other comments or questions by members of the board?
I'm certainly proud to have our board adopt this resolution. We will send it along again to our legislators and encourage their thoughtful consideration of this very complex issue. There is no more precious commodity than the children entrusted to us throughout the state of Michigan. Tonight, we celebrated American Education Week, and again, you know, the basis of our society, the great equalizer, is the public education we are able to provide the children entrusted to us, and so we are eager to partner with the Michigan Department of Education, our state legislators, as we look at this very complex issue. And again, I appreciate the board's willingness to adopt this resolution, and so we can take, again, a very thorough look at this complex issue.
Thank you. Any other comments, members of the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Sorry. President Burton says?
Yes.
There you go. It's late.
It's been a long evening. Thank you, the motion does pass. And Mrs. Oakwood, you will be sending this to our legislators on behalf of the district and the board.
I will.
Thank you so much, and thank you very much for your assistance in assembling all the information. The next item on our agenda is Item 8B, First Reading of Board Policies. This is First Reading of Board Policies, DJD, Expense Reimbursement, IDB, Health Education, IDFB, Intramural Activities, Removal of this Policy, JQE, Pregnant Students. This is the first reading of this policy, it does not require a motion, and it will not be voted upon this evening. Changes to our board policy or removal of any board policy require two readings. First reading is this evening, and the second reading will be at our next general meeting in the month of December, upon which we will take a vote at that time. Are there any questions or comments from board members on any of these policies at this time? And for the benefit of the public, these are minor changes, sometimes grammatical changes, or just making sure that the practice that we have is reflected in our policy. The one policy that is being examined for removal, intramural activities, is simply because we do not have activities under which we title them intramural activities any longer. We have clubs, we have sports, we have teams, we have varsity athletics, but we don't have intramural activities, so that's being omitted at this time. The next item on our agenda is Item 8C, Second Reading of Board Policies. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached documents for Policy ABBCC, Board Member Term of Office, Policy AFC, Emergency Closings of Schools, Policy BGA, Membership and Associations, Policy DFG, Fees, Payments, and Rentals, Policy EBH, Leasing and Renting, Policy KG, Community Use of School Facilities, Policy KI, Material Distribution in Schools, Policy KM, Visits to Schools, Policy KN, Public Complaints, Policy LDAJA, Security Footage, Policy MK, Accreditation.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Oakwood, would you like to address this group? We don't need to go into detail on each one, but...
Yes. Initially, the Board Policy Committee had taken a look at many of these policies, again, as President Burton mentioned, for either minor updates with regard to language to either reflect current law or current practice. None of the changes that have been recommended this evening changed the intent of the initial language, but rather either clean up legal references or language within these policies. This will be part of a continuing effort. Over the course of a number of months, we have over six hundred pages of board policy, so you can look forward to more in the future. We will continue to update these as part of the board's regular work. They take this responsibility very seriously and take a thorough look at these policies. Some are more related to day-to-day operations, and some are more related to board operations. In any case, they're reviewed by district administration, as well as the board, at both study sessions and committee meetings, and then come forward for two readings. So these policies have already been discussed, again, at three prior meetings, and are ready this evening to move forward with indulgence of the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions or comments on any of the policies that are listed in this motion? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes, President Burton?
Yes, motion passes. I would like to thank our administrative team for a significant amount of work. Policy is, as Mrs. Oakwood said, literally is over six hundred page document, but it is important that it be kept current. This board, a couple of years ago, began that in earnest, and at a certain point, we need to turn some of these over to the administration for further work before they can come back to the board, so you have our sincere thanks in addition to running the day-to-day operations of the district, taking a look at some of these that needed some administrative work before they came back. So thank you. At this point on our agenda, we are at Item 8D, Hearing from Board Members. As has been the custom of this board, rather than having seven of us repeat many of the same thanks and notations of the evening, we designate one board member to take care of that on behalf of the board. By all means, if there are other board members who would like to add anything, you're more than welcome. This evening, Mr. Centers will be taking care of hearing from board members for us.
Before the meeting started, several of us were saying that this is one of our favorite meetings, because the stories we get to hear about our teachers and the students, and just recognition is a really special night, so congratulations to our honorees, the Teacher of the Years. This is Education Week, so I was honored to read the resolution, honoring those who work really hard to advance kids, and we know that the future, as we stated, is our children, and it's really important to support them in their education. So thank you, everyone who works in education for all that you do. This week, we attended, I think all of us attended, the Education Foundation Lunch. We had a great speaker, and it was a very large crowd. It's really great to see the community come out and support the district. We're going to do it again next year, so if you haven't gone yet, please do attend. Franklin, I think this is the second time in three years they've made the semifinals, is that correct?
It is.
Yeah, that's incredibly impressive. So the coaching staff, the athletes, congratulations to them as well. I and several of us have attended the Blessings Bowling Event, which is a lot of fun, it's very laid-back and enjoyable, so if you have not had the opportunity to attend, I encourage you to do so. Thank you to my fellow board members for attending the conference. I think all of us gained a lot of knowledge and perspective that we could share with each other and bring to the job. Most importantly, though, thank you Karen and Crystal for getting your certification. I think all the classes and different levels you can achieve are important, but that first one, I think, is probably the most important, because it gives you the foundation you need to be a good board member. We had city elections this week, so a lot of familiar faces, again, being in office, but we have got very good relations with the city, and we hope to continue that. Finally, I want to just acknowledge that we have a lot of exciting things happening in the district, from our furniture to the new athletic fields that will be coming. We're seeing a lot of change in the district with the bond, but again, there's going to be a lot of exciting things happening for students that will be really great that we approve this evening. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Are there comments from other members of the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I would like to commend the Livonia Warriors who competed in some postseason preseason play this past weekend at an all-girls competition in Bloomfield Hills. The Lady Warriors were honored as finalists in the competition, showing that our Livonia Warriors team is still a team to be reckoned with, so congratulations to the Warriors, and especially to the Lady Warriors.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, we're going to go to the next item on our agenda. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Recess to Closed Session to Consider Written Legal Opinion from Council. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District recess to closed session for consideration of written legal opinion from council.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Let me see here. Mrs. Oakwood, is there anything you need to address with this? Okay. Mr. Centers, would you please take a role? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield, did you have a comment?
Usually, if we're at the end of the meeting, we let the...
I will.
Okay.
Yep, I will, thank you.
Sorry.
I'm just going to make sure that this passes first.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes, President Burton?
Yes, motion passes. The board will be going into closed session at this time for the stated reason. I do not know the length of the closed session that we will be in, however, we will be coming back out into open session to vote on the last remaining item on our agenda this evening. We will be coming back on televised recorded portion of our meeting at that time, but again, I don't know how long that's going to take. At this point, we are at recess. Thank you.
Welcome to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education General Meeting of November 13, 2017. The next item on our agenda is Item 10, Separation Agreement. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the separation agreement between the Livonia Public Schools School District, Livonia Education Association (LEA) and Jeffrey Markwart.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Centers, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. We have come to the end of our agenda for the evening. I wish you all a very nice evening. We are now adjourned. Good night.